This conference will now be recorded.
It's eight thirty, I think, to stand and say the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the light of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, good morning, everybody. This is the Metro County Board of Supervisors meeting at Metro County Courthouse in Osage. Meeting is available, my go-to meeting also. We have an agenda in front of us. Are there any corrections needed?
I'll move to the agenda.
Brian has made the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
I have no seconds. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Closed. Motion carries. Approve the minutes of the November twenty-first meeting and the claims. Are there any corrections needed? Why is we didn't approve it?
The motion for November twenty-first meeting and claim?
Henderson's made the motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Mayor's seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none?
Roll call. Todd?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Sidney?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye. Motion carries. County Attorney General Discussion.
Good morning. I know. Have anything specific? I don't believe anybody is waiting on anything from me at the current time. I'm not aware. I mean, sometimes people contact me. I usually try and stay on top of stuff. I might forget some sometimes. I guess Rachel brought up an issue earlier. I need to get ahold of somebody. I'll do that. Other than that, like I said, I don't, I'm not aware that anybody's waiting on me for any answers or any research projects or anything. If I've forgotten, let me know. Like I said, it's been, Colonel Dockett's been fairly active here lately, you know? So that's taken a fair amount of time, but that's kind of cyclical, kind of goes up and down. I guess, you know, anybody has any questions here for me?
Anything for the board? Okay.
My right? Thank you very much.
You have to sign and give me down. Okay. Sheriff update. Sheriff was not with us this morning. Department had discussion. Is there any department had discussion from anybody? Can you hear him loud? Yeah, he's not hearing anything. County Engineer update.
Pretty brief. I don't know. The typical vacation schedule is out for the standard, but I think the secondary roads guys, they get their half a day of New Year's Eve, but since New Year's Eve is on a Sunday, they're wanting to take Friday afternoon off. I think it's probably better to do that. They try to do something after year, so if that's okay with you guys, they'll take that Friday afternoon off for their half day.
I'm okay with that.
The only other thing I got right now is just the update on the 105 Bridge. It's been extremely cold. They've got blankets laying out on the grade to keep the ground from completely freezing so they can pour shoulders yet. It looked to me this morning when I was out there that they were forming up the bridge ends yet. Really, that's the only concrete left like they had last week was the bridge ends and then the shoulder placements. They got a concrete network yet and then guardrail and paint, but they're still trying to clean up some dirt yet and things like that. This cold weather really isn't helping them very much, but they're doing what they can with the weather until the temperatures come up. I'm guessing tomorrow's going to be in the low forties hopefully and maybe lose some concrete work then before it gets cold again. But I think after the day, the temperatures will be a little bit more conducive to pouring concrete and starting to cover it and insulate it. Not where I wanted to be at this time of year with that bridge, but I can't control their schedule, so.
Do they come every day or?
Yeah, they're there every day. That's just the nature of the beast is whether it's just the way things go sometimes. Always plan to have a good schedule to work from, but things always change, so. So I don't know. I emailed and then wanted to get a more definite schedule from them to find out when we can expect completion. That's all I've got this morning.
Other questions?
You're gonna do a policy for slow mailboxes?
Oh, okay. I haven't worked on anything like that yet. I've been kind of, that's kind of the back burner. We're kind of operating on what we have, but I've got some bigger fish to fry right now. Unless you guys got a different idea on how we want to handle mailboxes. Right now, it really doesn't. Right now, the policy, I think, doesn't even really say that. It says, "We're not responsible for replacement of mailboxes unless it's malicious in activity." I don't know what malicious means. Malicious to me means you do it on purpose. In the past, it's always been if we've struck it with our equipment, then we'll replace it. That's usually how it goes, but until I can get a better, you know, until I can get some time to put some thought into how we want to handle some of that stuff. Because right now, what we have done in the past, and it seems like we've been kind of deviating a little bit, is it's typically, you know what? This is a mailbox and right away, we're gonna put a standard post and a standard box up and be done. We get a lot of pushback from that. So sometimes we will deviate, but mostly we're gonna just kind of stick with our policy again and just kind of go back to the way it was. Standard mailbox, standard post. If we see that we are the ones that struck the mailbox. I know there's a lot of mailboxes hanging by a thread and then they want to blame us for it gets hit with the snow, and that just gets to be a lot of mailboxes in a year. So nobody's out there maliciously trying to hit mailboxes. But the way the snow is, sometimes it's wet and heavy and sometimes we just don't always get to, sometimes the operator's mind isn't always working where they want to lift that wing or they forget to lift that wing, and sometimes they do hit them and we'll replace them. So I haven't, I haven't worked on it. I've got more important things to work on than that for now, so.
Seasons come.
Yeah, well, it's already here, so.
Any other questions? Okay, we're ready. Thank you. Discussion on CO2 pipelines, public safety, and setback rules. Deb, I think you want this on, okay? Good morning.
Good morning. Good morning, everybody. This poster I brought was what we used at the time we kept the coal plant from coming into Mitchell County and ended up with the absolute energy ethanol plant. But the interesting thing about this is the sinkholes that are identified on here relate to the karst topography that is in most of Mitchell County. So I don't know if you want to, I'll just walk around.
The sinkholes within the?
Are the black, water, otherwise. And so here we are with Mona, so the ethanol plant is right around here. The plant for the pipeline basically goes.
And these are open sinkholes that are visible, but sealed?
I think they're ponded somewhere. They're just sinkholes, you know, that are, nobody's done anything with them as far as I know, and I don't know if the county has any responsibility. But it would just be another reason to think that a pipeline might be affecting water because the sinkholes lead to water in most places, like pond. And so all these, so here's Mona, the pipelines that made it go down like this. A lot of sinkholes and a lot of waterways. So Mona and what we're talking about, the pipeline, she is kind of right straight from here. All the black dots are sinkholes that were identified twenty years ago. And I don't, they've changed. Maybe there's more. Maybe they've been deeper. So I know that you've heard a lot about the pipeline over the last several months. Some of it from me. I'm just gonna review a little bit. One of the concerns we have is that Summit did a poor job of vetting the proposed pipeline route, the area that they're planning to go through, which this is an old map from the flatbook. But this also shows where these green marks are is where there's conservation areas and three endangered species are within the pipeline boundaries. And over here is the Otrano Park. So up here is the ethanol plant. So those endangered species would preclude the pipeline from coming through according to the readings, but still they're pursued. The Summit Carbon Pipeline, Mitchell County is what's called an LCA area, a low-concentrated area, meaning a low population of people, which all of Mitchell County falls under that category in this instance. And because of that, the shut-off valves will be 20 miles apart. So if a leak occurs, they would release that 20 miles worth of, the hazardous gas would just be released before they, I mean, they would shut off the valves, but that, where the leak is, would disperse all that gas. And so the worry about this hazardous gas, and there's lots of research out there that shows how much more dangerous it is than like natural gas. Oftentimes, the pipeline companies will compare it to natural gas. Natural gas goes straight up and you can burn it off and it's gone. Where this gas spreads on the ground, you can't burn it and it is in this asphyxian, so it would take away oxygen from everything. And so what, how long is Mitchell County?
Fracturing, probably 25, like 25, I think.
So we maybe only have two shut-off valves in the county? If they go by that 20-mile distance? The hazardous zone of a leak depends on the size of the pipe, from six to eight or 24 inches. And so the spreading of the hazardous area is a minimum of 1,100 feet for an eight-inch pipe. And we don't really know because Summit Carbon hasn't given us any details about what their plans are, how big the pipeline will be. But we know that at the, at the south end of the pipeline, where it was to join with another one, which now is no longer there, it would be 24 inches, where it would meet up with the Navigator. I think the Navigator one was what they were gonna meet with. So setback limits would address some of the concerns about those shut-off valves and the hat, and the leak, the minimum of 1,100 feet as a danger zone or a hazardous zone if we had setback limits of greater than 1,100 feet. And then there's also this, the new research that's come out has shown that it's not so much that there'd be a specific break in the line and a big leak, but more like a pinhole leaks that are caused by corrosion, because if there's any moisture that gets into the pipeline or reacts with the hazardous CO2, it causes corrosion and therefore causes these pinhole leaks, which then are undetected because nobody sees them. And it just spreads underground and then gets into the sinkholes and causes acidity of the soil and then localized death of all vegetation, meaning it'll destroy the soil for growing crops and kill any crops that are there. So the tar, karst topography and the sinkholes would relate to that or be a worry if there's any of those pinhole leaks. And the Navigator Pipeline has stopped their plans to go, or to even pursue any pipeline right now. The only, the only pipeline still before the IUV is the Mitchell County Floyd County Line proposed, starting at the absolute energy ethanol plant. So that's the only one that we can still send comments to the IUV about our concerns. And if you're willing to do that, it's 004 Docket. There is some additional information. It's, this is a list of all the counties, towns, and entities within the counties that have objected, have formally objected to the Carbon Pipeline. And there's a list of the counties on the back, seven of them that have signed the ordinance, that sample that I sent around to you. You can just pass it around. I didn't make more copies. This map also shows the ones that have, I can show actually copies of this, that have objected to the pipeline. It doesn't even show the Mitchell County one, and I think that's because it was an add-on. And these, the other Summit lines have already finished the hearings with the IUV, so the only one left would be the Mitchell County one.
Thank you.
So that list of counties and entities is going around too that already signed on. And I, there were none for Mitchell County, so I don't know if that's something we, how we address that exactly. But I would think the Conservation Board would be interested because two of these rare species or endangered species are on the conservation ground that they might want to sign on. So the next topic on the agenda was public safety, and have we notified the EMA Director? And who is the EMA Director?
Chris Olson.
Who?
Chris Olson.
Olson?
Yes.
Okay.
He's been involved in.
So he knows about the pipeline and?
He gets emails.
Okay. And so, and then as far as informing the public and landowners of concerns and what the plans are for the county to protect landowners per Iowa Code Chapter 331, have we, or is there a plan for that?
As far as?
Notifying the people along the pipeline, the landowners? Not everybody does email and not everybody goes to the meetings.
There has not been a plan though.
Pardon?
There has not been a plan.
Okay. And so one of the other things suggested was having some informational meetings for the people along the pipeline. And, you know, asking Summit to pay for all emergency equipment that might be needed or required to respond as a condition?
So I go to the Niaco meetings in Mason City, and they come to those meetings and they have already stated that they were gonna work with all the counties that have it, that will, they will provide the training as well as the equipment.
So they've got that in writing? So it's in writing? Okay, that's good. Mitchell County being an LCA, which is a low-density population area, so are the people in Mitchell County worth less than people in Mason City or Des Moines is a question for Summit also. Why do we have to accept the 20-mile distance for the shut-off valves? And then the water use is another question of concern because of the millions of gallons they want to take and potential depletion of groundwater and risk of the sinkholes being a factor. So today I wanted to ask if you'd be willing to vote to agree to setback limits related to a hazardous liquid gas pipeline, according to the Iowa Code Chapter 335 and Iowa Code 331, to protect and preserve homes and waterways. I'm asking you to vote to formally object to the Carbon Pipelines. I'm also asking if you would agree to notify the EMA, which you said you already have. And the pipeline proposed path will intersect with Highway 105 near the new bridge. Well, that was another concern or issue. Aye, but. And four, then I'm requesting a public meeting to include information to all persons along the route to understand the steps the Board of Supervisors are taking to mitigate risks to landowners, water, and infrastructure.
So in regards to Iowa Code 331, it's a whole new rule. And a lot of times people cite that very first part. I believe it's, I printed it. 331. 331, 301, okay? I understand people's concerns. There's people on both sides of this, but the sentence that a lot of people that have concerns about the pipeline fail to say when they read that code item, that it talks about exercising the power to perform a function, it deems appropriate to protect and preserve the rights, the privileges, and property of the county and its residents, and very good. I totally buy into that. That's, that's what the Board of Supervisors should be doing. But they put in a sentence that takes us out of the loop. It says, "Except as expressly limited by the Constitution of the State of Iowa and it is not, and if not consistent with the laws of the General Assembly." The legislature took the Board of Supervisors out of this game. That's just a simple fact. So in Shelby County, they did the same type of thing. They tried to do setback distances. A federal judge looked at this Iowa Code and said, "Can't do it." They threw it out. But that judge.
Is that the same judge that we would have?
Judge, I don't know, but it's a federal judge that, I mean, I have no idea about that. But what she did say was that, and this is kind of a, I don't agree with the statement, that's what the judge said, "State and local agencies cannot regulate safety matters." I find that to be a very bad sentence for, for this board, to not be able to do that. But the code says that and the judge also affirmed that, so that's where we're sitting at.
I think it was one judge. I don't know that it was, I'm sure there's other judges that might disagree with her.
I don't know that.
And I don't know what territory she posts. The Shelby is way north in the state.
I believe that's, I thought that was south, but I'm not sure.
It actually.
Sheriff?
Yeah, I believe it's.
Here, it's this dark blue and right here on this map. So it's southwest.
So, so I know people come to the Board of Supervisors and want change and want us to get involved and I understand that, but people need to be right on the case of the legislators that made this rule. They're the ones that did this.
Well, we need to vote differently next time.
And I won't, I won't get into that. My point is that it says it in code and the judge has affirmed what our responsibilities and limitations are.
I think it also says in the Summit rules that they will not invade, you know, the, like conservation areas that are protected. And if we have endangered species, that seems like that would be a logical setback limit area, because that says that they can't go into, or they shouldn't go into those areas. This Candace, you want to go ahead?
Yes. Can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay. So Candy Branda, and I've got some things I want to correct that. So this line would be hooking into the Summit mainline. Navigator is dead, but this line would hook into the Summit mainline near Rockford. That docket is in the IUV's hands. That permit has not been granted, but if it is granted, then this would be a go. The EMS thing that you talked about with Niaco, that is not in writing, because Summit has not been, has not put anything in writing, and it was up to the IUV to require them to do that, which they have not yet done. There will be 25 to 55 million gallons of water requested yet, each ethanol plant, each one, not just absolute. And Paul, when you talk about the judge, the federal judge, she was not for our territory. There, the Summit, or the Shelby County case is in appeals. There are also hearings scheduled for ordinances in our district. And FEMSA came out with a letter specifically addressing this issue. It was sent to all three pipelines saying that FEMSA says counties do have the ability to set siting. I can provide you with that letter. The, FEMSA only controls the safety of the pipeline itself. They expect counties and states to set limits on setbacks and siting of the pipeline.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And Candace, you are?
From Rockford area.
Okay, all right.
Go ahead. Okay, so that's basically what I had, and so she corrected about the judge being just a section of the state, not our section. And so, and we don't have anything in writing from Summit. You know, they say they'll do things, but we don't have it in writing. But we do have it in writing at some point, and I don't know where it is exactly, where they should not go through conservation areas or not impede endangered species. So I think that's, at least that area of the county, you know, might need some setback limits for Summit to be aware of, to protect those areas. And that'd be the Conservation Board that might request that.
And then they were gonna come to a meeting.
Yeah, and then they backed out of coming because I went to the meeting and they didn't come.
Right.
So I don't know what that means.
Maybe they reconsidering, you know?
Yeah, I don't know. Well, and really, if they reconsider, there's no, they'd have to go east or west, not south.
Yeah.
And so that would be across the Cedar River, which would be, which doesn't sound like a good idea to me either. And otherwise, it would end up closer to Toderville and State Seale.
Friday, we have, we're in a pool of 10 counties for our insurance, and Friday we have a meeting and they're gonna talk about that, the two lawyers that are.
Like the liability insurance issue or the?
It's property and liability, but they're gonna talk Friday, we have a meeting, and they're gonna talk about it, because four counties, it goes through four counties out of our 10, so the two lawyers that are hired by Hardman Insurance, they're gonna be there and give a presentation and what they suggest we do.
Oh, that'll be interesting.
I thought that one time Summit said they were gonna put a shut-off on both sides of the Cedar River.
Well, and they're, and, but what they say and what they do are two different things, we found.
It would only make, I mean, if it would go through, it would only make sense to put one on both sides of the river, because.
Sure.
And then how are they gonna cross the Mississippi? I don't see how they can do that.
I don't, well, I don't know how far down they'd have to dig to go under the Cedar River either.
All right, but the, for the map is, it's about the steepest point of the bluff at the Cedar, so why would you?
That's right. It's a rocky cliff down.
And then what, they're gonna bore so far back? Or it's, it's steep there?
There's a lot of questions that they haven't been willing to answer.
Yeah.
And now they haven't, have they come to your meetings lately?
They, they actually got an email this morning that they want to attend a upcoming meeting to talk with us.
And are they scheduled yet?
It's not, we haven't got the agenda put together yet, no.
It's been, I think, two months.
Yeah. They tried to do, their target was try to be quarterly, if, if, at the most, so that's what they said.
So you expect them to shut up in the next couple of weeks, or what do you think?
Well, I guess, I can't say what's, she didn't pick a date, so I, so I don't know that yet, but, but the agenda will come out, I mean, just.
Yeah, well, but the agenda only comes out a day ahead. How will people be aware?
It comes out on Friday.
It's posted?
Yeah.
On, online?
Yeah, and the board upstairs in the courthouse, and it gets sent out, so yes.
So they have a three-day notice to get off work or something? Okay, that, so I was just hoping you would do something action-wise. I know you've got lots of information, but I don't know if Mitchell County's.
Well, there's nothing, there's nothing here that says action yet. There's, there's no action in regards, this is just discussion, so this isn't something that we actually can even throw on today, so the Board of Supervisors, I guess.
So now you guys make it, isn't it? You make a decision if you will, put it on the agenda every week or, or put a vote, or how do you do that?
If, if a, if a board member wanted to have this on for every week, then if that board member could do that, I personally am not gonna have this on the agenda every week myself, but it's an important topic, but I can discuss it every single week.
But now, well, there'll, there'll be follow-up to the meeting, the insurance meeting next week?
Yeah.
Yeah, I can give you information I'll leave you, see you.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Discussion on possible action on Mitchell County Substance Abuse Coalition funding request. So I got a letter here. This is in regards to Substance Abuse Coalition. I'm not gonna read the. This is in regards to Substance Abuse Coalition. I'm not going to read the whole letter, but the purpose of the program is to teach students the risk associated with the early use of alcohol and drugs to the brain and body while they are developing. All schools have indicated their desire to continue the program. We can only provide it with the support for both FEMC and the board supervisors. FEMC has approved $3,000 for Prime for Life for the school year 2023-24. We are requesting a match of $3,000 from the board supervisors. We have also contacted the foundations of each school for assisting in paying the cost of the workbooks, as respectfully from Betty McCarthy, the secretary of the Substance Abuse Coalition. So are there any questions from the board? We have a resolution in regards to approve it. I can read the resolution. So maybe discuss this all if there's any questions. Resolution 1202-23, the contribution agreement made between the Mitchell County Board of Supervisors and Mitchell County Substance Abuse Coalition is effective as of November 28, 2023. That's if we approve it. Whereas the Mitchell County Substance Abuse Coalition has requested $3,000 in funding from the Mitchell County Board of Supervisors, this funding request will be used for funding the Prime for Life program for educators, students in Osage, Riceville, and St. Ansler schools. Now therefore be it resolved, the Mitchell County Board Supervisors will contribute $3,000 to Mitchell County Substance Abuse Coalition. Is there a motion to approve Resolution 1202-23?
I'll make a motion to approve that resolution.
Mayor has made the motion. Is there a second?
One second.
Ryan, seconds. Any further discussion?
Goodness, come out of that.
Oh boy, funny.
Yeah, yeah, that'd be logical. Yeah, glad you said that, because that's, that's where we want to come from. Any other discussion? Hearing done.
Bro, Jim.
Hi.
Cindy, hi. Mike.
Hi.
Mark.
Hi.
Hi.
Motion carries. Discussion on possible action on Mitchell County disclosure policies and procedures. Rachel, you got this, and I highlighted a bunch of it. It, it looks like you are the compliance, you are the compliance officer, and it's a lot of responsibilities for you, basically, is that how that document is?
Yeah.
Yeah. There's quite a bit there. So do you want to go over any of that?
I talked with Darcy and Whitney. They had, this is basically everything we have to do because we purchase bonds. And they just like to make sure that everything is updated every few years. So it's everything we're already doing, but just keeping everything up to date, for sure. And it is listed in there. Our contact for like doing our Emma reporting is Northland Securities.
Okay. We can approve this by resolution again. Resolution number 1201-23, resolution authorizing adoption of policies and procedures regarding municipal securities disclosure. Whereas pursuant to the laws of the state of Iowa, Mitchell County, Iowa, the county has publicly offered and likely will issue, publicly offer in the future its notes, bonds, or other obligations, the bonds. And, and whereas in June of 2016, the county adopted certain policies and procedures regarding municipal securities disclosure, the original disclosure policy, to be followed in connection with the issuance and ongoing administration of publicly offered bonds. And whereas, as a result of certain changes in federal law, the county deems unnecessary and desirable to amend and restate the original disclosure policy. And whereas the proposed policies and procedures regarding municipal securities disclosure are attached heretofore as Exhibit A, and that's in that disclosure document Exhibit A is. And now therefore be it resolved by the board supervisors of Mitchell County, Iowa, as follows, Section 1, the disclosure policies and procedures attached heretofore as Exhibit A are hereby adopted and shall be dated as of the date hereof. Section 2, all resolutions or parts of resolutions in conflict therewith are hereby repealed to the extent of such conflict. And as it is passed and approved from the 28th of 2023, is there a motion to approve Resolution number 1201-23?
I'll make that motion.
Mayor makes a motion. Is there a second?
Okay.
I have those seconds. Any further discussion?
Rachel, did you say that Northland Security, will they help you with this?
Um, I provide, with the information I need to, like that yearly report.
What's every year?
The Emma report is, yeah. Do I think June, February?
That's a death book that she puts together?
Yeah, correct.
Okay. Any other discussion? Hearing done.
Bro, Mark.
Hi.
Mike.
Hi.
Cindy, hi. Jim.
Hi.
Tom.
Hi.
Motion carries. Discussion on possible action on Mitchell County, excuse me, discussion on possible action on Easy Go Snowmobile groomers request.
Yeah, Mike, I'm going to need to take a hot seat or can I talk to you here?
Uh, if you want to come up, you can, but I know Todd had put this on, so Todd, you want to talk to about it or whatever?
Yeah. Most probably know me. I'm Carl Herman. I'm the president of Mitchell County Easy Rider Snowmobile.
Okay.
Back in the archives, I've been around this long enough that years back, we talked to the supervisors about a place that we could build a building or whatever to store our equipment in. We never proceeded on it. And back then, it was offered, and it would be at one of the county sheds if we did anything. Well, our Cubs grown enough, we got about 120 miles of trails that we maintain throughout the county. We've acquired quite a bit of equipment. So at our meeting, instead of the expense of putting up a building, we were wondering if one of the secondary road maintenance facilities you have, we could set a storage container, like a 40-foot storage container that we could put our stuff in. We picked St. Ansler just because it was, when I talked to Todd, because it was centrally located for everybody to get to, to put our stuff at. But we're open to whatever, if the county was willing to work with us, to, to do something like this. And we had a meeting last week, and it could probably possibly be two containers to get all our stuff underneath the roof and in one place, instead of scattered out. Right now, it's all at members' houses. Some stored here, some stored there. The groomer itself is stored in a building in the county. We're not really looking at storing the groomer there at this point. It's just containers. We could put shelves in our signages. We have a ranger that we, members can check out to maintain trails with, that they don't have one of their own. We have a trailer to haul that. We have another trailer that we put on, like the breakfast at the fair each year, the pancake breakfast, we put on that every year, that we had all our stuff in, our grills and cooking stuff. And we put on other benefits throughout the year for fundraisers or whatever. But anyway, somewhere to store all that stuff, when I talk about getting it all centrally located, so all the members know where it's at, where they can go get it at. So we're just asking the board whether that was still an option with them, that we could pick somewhere to set one of these containers. So like I said, it'd probably start with one for now, but at the meeting they talked, you know, it might end up with two for everything to get in one place. That's pretty much the justice.
Rich, do you have a comment, or is there room at St. Ansler for two of them, or what's your thoughts, Rich?
Look at the layout a little bit more of St. Ansler. I know Stacyville, there'd be plenty of room.
I'm going to, I'm sure that when you say there's plenty of room, after our meeting, everybody likes to grow things. So the state has changed how we are getting our funding. So we would like to set a fuel barrel, like a 300-gallon fuel barrel, to get fuel centrally located for the groomer. But again, back in their growing in the meeting, and our groomer in that, is they brought up if we had two of them down the road, if they could be spread apart, and you put a roof over it, so we park our groomer. You know, it wouldn't be a permanent structure. It's just container units, but that's way down the road. Right now, we're just looking for a container unit. And like I said, we thought somewhere that we could set this fuel barrel by it, we'd just run it off a 12-bol, hook it up to the tractor, and fill it up. And then if, if the county, you know, brought up again, wanted to go along with this, if it would be all right at night in the wintertime, that we could pull it up and plug it in somewhere. Right now, we find someone that lets us plug it in, you know, and they report to the next guys that are running, that the groomer's sitting here, or sitting there. But if we could get somewhere centrally, that it always works out and comes back to the same place, then everybody knows where to get it.
No, no, I understand that. I'm just thinking.
Those are all things brought up in the meeting to let you know, not, not just the box. They got.
Well, right, right. I understand that. I'm just looking at, you know, we were, I think last week it was brought up that maybe Stacyville's a good spot, and they know that there is places to put a cargo container because there's a big hay ground there too, that we wouldn't put it there. We were making a fence line there. St. Ansler's a little bit more confined in our area because we've got a drainage way behind it. But I think we can find a place for it. We just have to try to strategically locate it so that it's not in our way. Because behind our St. Ansler shed, we've got our, we've got storage for our snow piles and things like that, plus our salt mix sheds there, where we could put it, I guess, we could always, we can, we can look at things. I'm not saying it's not possible at all. It's probably a good idea. To centrally locate it, now, I think there's a way, way to work it out, just a matter of what are the future plans, and how many more containers are going to be put somewhere.
And we're, and we're willing to do whatever, I mean, be gravel put down a level, and we're willing to do all that stuff, you know. We're just looking for a place that we could put these, that they would stay.
Right.
Instead of all of our stuff gets scattered, because you get, somebody leaves the club, well, now you got to go get that stuff back and whatever. So that's all we brought up at the meeting. And I just said, I've been around long enough, and it was a long time ago, that this was brought up by the board one time, but, and so we're just pursuing whether that option's still open.
Yeah, I don't think there's a reason why we couldn't kind of help accommodate that a little bit. And then, I don't know, plug it in the groomer.
I would have questions about that as far as legality of it too, because.
Well, they, they brought this up at the meeting. For me, I have to look into that because, you know, the public could, the public could say, you know, are my tax dollars being used to pay $5? You know, that, you know, I'm going with that?
Yeah, I know where, I know where you're going with it, so I understand that.
So that would have to be figured out.
Yeah, we would have to look at the insurance side of things, but I, you know, some of these things in my mind are, well, we got to, we got to evaluate them. They're, they're, they're kind of minor in a way, but something to look at.
And we, we do as a club now, because we own this ranger and trailers or whatever, now, we do have insurance now, right? Before, they wouldn't give us insurance, but now we own them. So now they, they give us insurance on this kind of stuff. So I'm sure we can insure these containers or add them to our policy or whatever. Because, I mean, the state's insurance just covers the groomer, right? Because they, they still own the groomer. We don't own it, actually, the state player. The ISA, the Iowa State Snowmobile Association actually owns the groomer now. So.
That's about all I got. Just if we could, any comments or questions from the board about any of that?
I think if you can work with Rich and find a place that works for both of you, I don't see a problem with it.
You want to get?
Get Rich's contact information. You two can discuss this and figure it out. And it sounds like the board's okay with it, just as long as it's not in Rich's way, that kind of thing. Okay, that's all I got.
Okay. The seats not there, I think we'll.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, y'all. Well, and ma'am, excuse me.
Thank you.
Okay, correction on Resolutions 1199-23 and 1223. When we approved the appropriations resolution, it was last week, two weeks ago, it was accidentally labeled, it's accidentally numbered 1199-23. So it should have been numbered 1200-23, because that's the next sequence in numbering. The resolution was read, so what we approved was what was read. We don't have to reapprove the appropriations, but we just need to approve to renumber the appropriations resolution as 1200-23. Is there a motion to renumber the appropriations resolution at 1200-23?
I'll make that one.
Anderson has made a motion.
Awesome.
Ryan has seconded it. Any further discussion? Hearing done.
Bro, Cindy, hi. Jim.
Hi.
Mark.
Hi.
Mike.
All right.
Motion carries. Items of note, meetings attended. There was an HVAC meeting a week ago today. They have about three or four weeks of work left to complete the project. The main boiler that was heating the facility last winter is, was, was going to be operational last Tuesday, by the end of the day. The last time I mentioned to you, they had to do some hydronic pipe doing in order to get that boiler fed into the air, the air handling units. That was completed, so the facility is, is being heated now. So the three to four weeks is now to, and, and the main boiler is not the main heat source. It can be, it's bigger than that, but the facility is to be heated and cooled by the geothermal field, because that's the efficient way to do it. So the three to four week thing is to get everything going for the geothermal field into the system so it works. Part of that is the controls that make it all happen, the computer control network. So all right, that's kind of an update on the HVAC project. That's all I had.
I had none, but the landfill, I mean, I heard in the whole truck.
I have one. Nothing for me?
I had an MCEDC meeting. Basically, just had the treasures and the financials, and then most of our time was spent on childcare coalition. Girls in the coalition committee are putting it all together, and we, it's a good thing we have a lot more money that we have to spend in a year than what we were anticipating. So it's quite a, quite a job for them to figure out how to get that spent for the first year. So I don't know, Jenny, you wanted to add anything on that, or?
No, we got it figured out. So we had six hundred, six thousand dollars. We spent by September 30th of 2024, so what we came up with was, our initial goal was $2 per hour, you know, for all the childcare workers. We met that goal, so we're going to do the $2 per hour. That'll be ongoing past year one. In addition to that, we have some sign-on bonuses, referral bonuses, retention bonuses. We also included some of the employees that we probably wouldn't include, we winded up at extra money. But going forward, after this year, plan is to stick with the $2 per hour. And that's kind of what's sustainable with our funds that we have today.
It says, it's, it's a good thing, so. And then our next month's meeting is on Christmas Day, so we decided to change that. We'll have that December 18th via Zoom. That's all I had.
Nerd management plan update.
Number one for Christians and Wayne, 34, 35-year-old, out of the women.
Good. Transfer funds. This is a transfer to the secondary road department on the general basic and from the rural basic. This is the 16 and 78 cents that comes out of property tax, which is prior by law to go to the secondary road department, and then 3 and 38 cents for the rural. And the majority of the board approved the budget last year. We decided to, within that approval, we decided to increase the amount that we were going to provide to the secondary road department. Rachel, was rural at 83? Did we?
I think it was 83.
75% up to 83, and I don't, did we do anything in general? I can't remember.
I think general stayed at 75.
Okay. So that's the minimum that we're allowed at 75%. We bumped rural up to 83%. So secondary roads is getting more than what they did in previous years. So. So the transfer from the general basic is $101,000, $101,024. The transfer for rural is $763,023. That's just a solo note item, isn't it?
Yeah.
Okay. Public comments, are there any public comments?
I forgot.
Yes?
I'm assuming Rachel mentioned this last week, I wasn't here, but we're having a meet and greet out at the nature center Thursday night. We're gonna have some, we're very close to a few other things. Reason I feel it's important for all of our elected officials to come out, there's a people that don't normally get a chance to meet you or talk to you, gives you an opportunity to get in front of the people that you represent. And so this is basically, it's not, it's not parties, you know, everybody should attend because everybody in the county is invited to come and meet you guys. We're gonna have the, Lieutenant Geller's gonna be there, Will Brown's gonna be there, and possibly a couple other people there, possibly actually get some, for people to come out and meet and ask questions about the people that they represent them, so we're inviting everybody to come to that. We feel it's very important that elected officials show up for this. So the people that you represent can come and ask you questions too. It gives you a chance to get to know people you maybe not have ever met, that you represent.
So this is not Republican or Democrat oriented?
No, it's not. Bipartisan.
Okay. Right.
The Democrats work on it too?
We're putting it on, but it's bipartisan, so.
Nonpartisan.
Nonparti, yeah, nonpartisan. There's no political, other than the fact is that the people you represent get a chance to meet you guys, and that's why it's important for everybody to come out, that, so you can meet the people you represent, okay?
Date the date again?
What?
The date again?
It's Thursday, 9th and 30th, it opens up at 6 o'clock, it's the nature center. I've got posters all around town.
Where about the rest of the county?
We got several counties invited to come over. So we, we're trying to, what we're trying to do is we're trying to unify people to get on the same page, and so I think, I think we can represent, counties can represent this part of the state, but like a bunch of counties except one county. So that's why I feel it's important to try to learn to unify together and, and increase the communication and let everybody have, ask questions, not just certain people.
Okay. And I appreciate you bringing that up during public comments. We did discuss it last week, Rachel brought it to the board, but, before the meeting, but the, the board meeting is a, is a business meeting for the board supervisors, and we really don't want to have politics part of the business meeting.
No, we don't.
No matter what party it is, so that's why it wasn't discussed at the meeting, but I appreciate you bringing up public comments, that's, that's the place to do that.
All right, thank you.
Yep. Any other public comments?
I'd just like to speak in favor of doing something about the carbon capture pipeline, setback, whatever, I mean, I personally don't think that it is a forward-looking technology. It's based on using 60% of our corn crop to make ethanol, and I believe that climate change is happening, parts of world are getting, there's desertification happening in producing areas, and we're going to be the breadbasket of the world, we might be needing to use more of our land to grow blue crops for people right now. This is based on Iowa continuing to put 60% of its corn into ethanol, but, but there's the safety issue, which is why I wish you would consider looking at everything you could do to, if this technology is forced through our county, protect us. And just on the water issue, I've been signed up as a citizen scientist, I did test the nitrate level in the courthouse water today, out of the drinking fountain, and was at it too, which is considered safe, but I know my own, one day the water that came out of my tap this fall was almost a tin, so water quality is another issue that I'm concerned about in this carbon capture pipeline that's going to impact just the water availability in Iowa, because they'll be taking out millions of gallons of water every year from the aquifer, which will impact us.
Thank you. Are there any other public comments?
Are you able to hear on the phone?
Uh, wait, just a second. Yes, go ahead.
Hi, my name is Lisa Ritter, I'm a Mitchell County landowner, and what was just said about water, and earlier about meetings with Summit, so far what Summit has put out are like brochures and, like, they're, they're selling a product, because obviously they want to, you know, get this up and running, and they're, they're selling a product. But a lot of things have come to light, and one of them is water, and it was two, two years into this, and not until the hearing, did it come to light that there are 13 small LLCs under Summit that weren't directly known, that are putting in permits for these waters. So there's a lot of transparency issues that are, are coming to light that the public is just, is finding out, and that makes it unsettling as to what to be trustworthy about when the reality of things aren't, aren't told upfront. And also, people are giving over easements and this such without all of the information on safety being told upfront. So it's not a good faith business model that's going on currently, and so that's why as landowners and community members, that we're looking to have the people who have voices for us to help with the communication. So that would be like you all with the board of supervisors. So when we're looking for educational meetings and having this on agendas, because it's, it's complex, there's a lot to learn, just being on the docket, like, I would highly recommend that you get on the docket, because when you're on the docket, you, you hear the different communications that are going, because those are sent out to everyone who makes a reply on the docket. So if someone puts out a comment or an objection or a letter of support, and they want to attach 10 pages of evidence as to why they're going for that, then the person who reads that now is educated on that. So in the least, I would say that it would be helpful to get on the 0004 docket, so that that information can be readily available. But we're just looking for, you know, it's not about being for or against, it's being prepared, and some of this, regulations, possibly not, but it, like was mentioned, the federal government recommends that Summit and other corporations, that they work with the communities and the people, that they cooperate, and it's open and transparent. They recommended the Ploom studies be put out.
I'll have to wrap it up just a little bit, so, please.
Pardon?
Please, please wrap up what you're going to say, because we, we limited to three minutes, so.
I am.
Okay.
I am, thank you. The, the Ploom studies and such, they want that information to be put out to the people so that we, we can have those. But we're just looking for this to be more educated and, but citing is one of those things that we can do, and before it becomes contentious, those citing ordinances be put in place.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Go ahead.
Hello, I'm Caitlin Golly from Nora Springs of Floyd County, but in regards to the pipeline issue and the Iowa code, how you had mentioned, the judge had said that the counties don't have the authority to issue safety distances or safety matters, that doesn't mean, if that ends up affecting this area, it doesn't mean that the door power is there. There are several different things that you can do. You can also come at it from a different angle, focusing on the environmental or conservation aspects, or any other angles that you can think of, along with your constituency. From there, you can also go ahead and file a formal objection, I think it was Lisa who mentioned the docket number with the Iowa Utilities Board. You can submit an objection as the board of supervisors, as the county, every city in the county can submit one, for each club, your church, any individual can submit those objections, that helps to advocate against these projects. But it also gives you a way to put your voice in it, in the safety matters, if you are limited to put it anywhere else. And then one last comment on that is, somebody had mentioned FINSA, and that is the Pipeline and Hazardous Safety Materials Administration, who oversees the federal regulations for safety. They have not completed their rules and regulations around safety on this pipeline nationwide. And so what I would love to see is a moratorium on these pipeline projects at the county or state level, until the safety regulations are in place and enforced, and then you can have a clear guideline of, well, what do we have authority over on safety, where are the gaps? So until those rules are not completed, we don't have a clear basis of even really where to begin to help protect people in our counties. Thank you.
Okay. Last, last, is it about the pipeline? Last comment?
Yeah, I mean, environmentally, ecologically, Mitchell County is a gem, and we all know that, we all love, love it here, and the risk to our, to our water and our aquifer and our use of water and our wells is very present, there's also this to our, our waterways from discharge after the pipeline water is used, was the pump or not, before it will then be discharged. So I really think we need to use every tool at our disposal to look at, look at this carefully. Most of the safety records for these types of pipelines are not in this type of area, they're in flat, dry, warm arid. We have karst, we have sinkholes, we have frost heat, which is a different animal altogether. I just worry about the, about the lands, and I worry about the people who live on it and love it.
Okay, thank you. Are there any comments in regards to, other than the, the pipeline?
I, I got one comment on that. We've been going through this for quite some time, and, and just as one board member, I just want you guys to know that I'm going into this with a very open mind. We have to look at both sides, we have to listen, and we have to do our homework, absolutely, but I am telling you, I'm going into it with an open mind. Okay, so I'm for Mitchell County, but if there's something out there that provides for Mitchell County, and I've visited with Summit Carbon, and they've said a lot of things too, just like you guys have said, nothing's in writing, so I'm just, just want you to know, I'm, as one, going into this with an open mind. There's a lot of blue sky out there.
Okay. It is 9:34, I will adjourn the meeting.